The existing legislation also, that is called Sala, allows you to subdivide your land, that will be your private property, only through the consent of the national minister.
Biyalo, mula wa, wa biyalo, wele or neloa, no wele or, o vitwa Sala. Odu, o du mele la o, arola esee, sese, sese, wa kere, na ra, ra biyalo, eh, omi, sese swanijou fitsho ke, ye na tona.
Eh, ona na olua wa Sala, loa, ambanak na loa, ambele fambela na, wona, kutera, na na tumakata ku avua kamisawa, la olo zionkulu, angana matimba, na vutlambele zowaka rokumisawa, yo avua njaani.
This becomes a challenge on cooperative governance between your local, your provincial and national spheres of government.
Sese ibatloto ye holo o, eh, ye onataba ye ya, pusho tirishano, garaga musho wa, wa vosichaba, wa profensi, le musho watikuloko.
Kuva mila wale, kuva mila wale mbiri, ye va irkona, nokla wala tumakata misawa, swanga mfilu mfilu, nan kuetle mbitano, ashkaraka, mati, mati rana, kutera, entelele uterisana, ashkaraka, mfulmu olashkaray, mfulmu olashfundeini, na mfulmu wa la mikanginu.
Now, Pidal that you are here for wants to close these gaps, and this will go to other pieces of legislation that are existing in municipalities, your spluma, in your provincial government, that your spatial plannings, so that we make sure that provincial government, municipalities also in their plans, slot your agricultural sector plans, provide resources for them also.
Biyalo, eh, eh, sese akaricha le, ona, eh, eh, mula o, wa padal, omi, re levele choro, wa kere, mula kaka nyano wa padal, o levele choro, oto, oto alele, eh, mo ilongore, eh, mula kaka, mila wa kai, kai buleli, di ntsachi lora, kai buleli kachona, rapé, ya karicha loana, mula wa ne wa, ya di, ya, 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 maspara, ya di profensi, wa spluma, eh, rapé ite eh, eh, ya ra belale tabacha, wotlakamaa no gori, eh, karolo ye ya na ga ye, u dironka yona, ye idironka yona, wola rapé, no wuchirelecha, na ga, ya chatemo.
Aká, eh, shukulua le shina, eh, konbisini ku ku na kuetle mbitano, ashkaraka, terisana, ashkaraka, siyenge swamba na banasamfumu. Sese na olue, taku na o, na wa pedal, swango, wola wa ololo shankuetle mbitano, lo ya wangakona, aká, ashkaraka, siyenge swamba na banasamfumu. Lesuwa stafu na ngofuku, lokoma doroba, magapula na ku ba, akupa tsama njaani, mata teke la influkwenu ku lokowa, akati ndawo tava, bakota tsama, ku fane kuwa kuranda olisiwa ka, yo entawurim, ebi loko, okota ku pasisa na olu, ubasi sa seso, etakoko ta kuwa, namla wa ya ambanan, banan, ya mfulmu, le iko ta ku kuterisana ka, tu nga na kuetle mbitano.
Now, we are here as this committee to engage directly with you as our stakeholders that are affected by this Pidal.
Biyalo, refah, biyalo ka komiti, wotla ovulishana lele natui, biyalo ka, wathwaba mba ilongore, eh, le angwa ke wa namla kaka nyawa Pidal.
Eh, lokomewa na ere la, etakota ku vula vura sanana ngwina, hito ma vula, ma vonele ya ngwina, me, ke la me koma ku, na olua Pidal, inga okota ku entlanjaani, ku okota ku tiraka, le ku okota ku wira san ngwina, wa akati ku, kuwa, mi wanawa ku mbeka ngofu, ina olue, etakota, etakota rana o, na moncha.
We want to solicit your views, your inputs, not only that you agree or you don't disagree with the bill, but give us reasons that will help us to take this process further as this committee.
Re, tlo, tyelecha, mi wonu ya leena, eh, lema ekutoa leena, eh, asera, asera talafela o tlo kawo, le tlo, le tlo, le du mele na, le mula kaka nyo, kuvala ganana, le mula kaka nyo, refah ma vone, ma, mi, mi wonu ya leena, ye loko, etakona o tlo, tchavula o, namla kaka nyo, re, biyalo ka komiti, garasepe la, re, re, bane recepala le, vutlali vole, le tava le retavile vone.
Loko me wa na itilela noa, itile ku ta, ku vula vura na ngwina, hito ma vonele ya ngwina, me, jeela ku na olue, inga u antisanjani, ilawa ku varu valendo suka, a etanke la ne, etak, etak to kuri, ma a la ku mbeka mapumelela na, na 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 ombisi lo, seso a etala nksona, sese, lesuwa ilawa ksona, ilawa ku mi neka ma vone lo, yo, inga u antisanjani na oluanu, u vanau lo nene, lo nga ta wira san ngwina, wa akati ku.
Where you have consents on some of the clauses on this bill, please highlight them and make proposals that will enable us to address your consents that you would have picked on this bill.
Fa ilongore, msumwele lele, eh, di tlo, tlo, matsoinyo ma, bapi le, di karolo na, che, dungacha mula kaka nyo, le, eh, layecha di karolo na, chono, ju cha, cha mula kaka nyo, omi, o, tchalo shogoro, uvo karata o vana, mula kaka nyo, orre, ye nga na mu di karolo ncharichu, omi, re, shabulona mula kaka nyo, kele vone.
Eh, loko, mobo na ku, ku na shungani, ku mbeka ku na antila, ambinzima na ukare, le inga indisana ikati na moyo ngwina, akana ombisi loa, mi konbera ku mtaika shota la, ku mbeka, eh, shungana shungana, shi mngatafunga yshona, me fika mi kuati hata la, ayah, ah, skanti la lo ya, unga mi indiseka, ebi loko, mi nu kuwakare, mtae jeela ku antila lo ya, mngao kuati hata, unga mi indiseka, unga antisanjani, ku, eh, ku etilele, wa na na ombisi, lo nga ta funarshak.
Now, to our municipalities, local government and provincial government, and I'm happy that we have been joined by the Director Natural Resources Management, Nda Tere Richard Selimela from the Provincial Department of Agriculture here in Limpopo.
Rapé, kitaba o, refah, garaga re na, re na le ye na mulaudi, wa ye na, eh, 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 human, eh...
Natural Resources Management.
Ye na human, human, natural resources management, o, nafa, kitaba la o, o na.
Etwa, etakile ngofu no va, etetwa ikatekele, yokova, ashkaraka eh na, eh, namla oru nkuulu, wati makata shteriswa, sa, ntumbuluko, ngabo na tatan na Richard, la wa bangka ymsama voko, mi vone.
So as this committee from these spheres of government would want to gain understanding and a state of readiness, in terms of capacity and resources availability, in respect of responsibilities, I kere re relate the agricultural sector in your plans.
Omi, biyalo ka komiti, re, re rata o vana, eh, ye na, eh, eh, makala a, awafapa na am, am musho, re rata o vana o, re, ba toka ba iki mshi riche biang, wotla, o tlo shuma, kama mula kaka nyo anu, omi, re le, kulele, ma vuxoni, ay ilongore, banelo, namva vapi le, di tabacha na che.
Tanee eh komiti, ya le ti kwene inkwaro, kusuka le, ma kona, le she, na, te la ngofu shona, ku bo na kuri, wa famisi na balauru, wa siyenge swamba na banasamfumu, mata shterisanjani, shterisiwa, lesuwa nganashona, ku entakushbono, shana ombisi lo, shoku ta ku melere.
This will include duplications or conflicts on your existing spluma and your spatial development frameworks.
Sese ta akaricha, eh, di, mo ilongore, eh, spluma, itlalu shadi lo, msumwe, ka tchalu shasi lo, eh, eh, gati, kuwa omwe, wa kujela lora, ebulala ka, ntsaye irileng, ka, ya, war kaba ra, wa tlakan tsaaye ilongore, itu la na le ntsaye lora shijitjolichu, ku re tla rokona o tlo, tchavula.
Tanee lesuwa mngawa ku mesti va ku, tu makata ma tsamele ya va, ku mbeka mngangali akua ku kuva nka okota tsama ka yon, ku na, banu, wa ambanan, banan, nasi ngoswa ambanan, banan, lesuwa ngenelela ko, aká oku plana makale, ku talako wa na kuetle mbitano, loko, etawa, ilu la msi kuetle mbitano loa, banu, wa ta okota ku tsamiswa ka, le, bangka vinan filu ngani, ebi wa kelewa, eh, okota enteki makata urimi, wa kelewa tsama, ku nga na ngianga.
Now, one could ask, after all this, what's going to happen?
Motwa ka epucho kore, mraoga tse picho, etu, o tlo dira ga.
Eh, unanu wa ngwina angatama kwaala, angatuputi sa ku, loko, etawa, entile inkwasu, lesuwa ngashlamsele ko, esungoriri, ku ya omelere la hi, nukusuka kwaala.
We conducting the first of these hearings today here in Zanin.
Eh, lho no ka, mo Zanin, ke, tyeleju ya matomo, ye sicha ba, ma vapi le mula kaka nyano.
Loko me wa na ere la, kwaala Zanini, eh, eh, rengura enarosungu, lakuba ifamba, eh, to ma vonele ya wa akati ku, kuwa akati kuwa na wala ku na olu, u antisanjani.
We still have two days here in Limpopo, we'll go to other districts and we will proceed to other provinces also with this public hearings.
Resana le ma chachiya ma bedi, mo, eh, Limpopo, rotovari ya di le tienje di we, omi, rotot, mraoga, fao, rotochu la pele, rayetela di profensi kamoka, ku fithelela, rayetela Afrika vura kabopar.
Loko, esuka la ka ngwina la Zanini, etatake masiku mambiri, la malanzelaka, ye akatunwa ndawo, ye to ma vonele lo ma o, loko, etawa, etile masuka la mambiri ali pompo, etakashfunda, shungani, shlanzelaka, ebi loko, etakashona, ye akashwangani, ikale, eh, ntsangele ta ma vonele ya wa akati ku, ku fane le shindisatsona la ka ngwina.
We will take all submissions oral in these meetings and also written submissions to the committee that we would, after everything consolidated, invite the Department of Agriculture, Rural Development and Land Reform to come and respond to your submissions.
Ngwina, la wa, mi ma vula vula ku ku nené mlomo, loko, etile ku vula vula mlomo, bangwan vatanikiwa, angateko, o, loko, baraswangani, balawa kusvula, bangasuka ta ki kusvula, pasala ku nené, va irumele, loko, etile seso, etatake ma vonele ya ma ya inkwao, ewa tlangani sa, ebi entashubiko, ebi kusuka kwalanu, etarapa nzaulu, ya, eh, ya nshubukiso, wa, mate ku ashkaya na urimi, ku vata, vata shlamula, shvutiso, lesuwa shungani, mngasvutisa, inga tana deka kushlamula, ebi kusuka kwalanu, etalangansat makata eh na, ebi antisana ombisi.
The committee will then process the bill, taking into account your inputs from all stakeholders, response of the department, do a report submitted to parliament that will process.
Biyalo, eh, komiti, etlo levele dixisha, omi, ya sipixa, ya sipidisha lechona, di ntsaka mka chalo, di tlo, di tlo, di tlo ba di chole la fa, omi, ya, shumishana le, bana, ba hatatima, baba we, kamoka, omi, ba tchamapiro, omi, ba tyelecha, le, ba levele la lechona, eh, di ntsachi lora, chagohoro, ya chatemo.
Eh, kusuka kwalanu, eh, komiti le o, itakatsakanya, ma vonele ya ma mngavani ka, nanshamulu, ya inga nikwa nzaulu, ebi kusuka kona, elandelisa, process le, landeruwa ku loku entluwa nao, ebi loko, etile seso, etatake seso esisa, aká komiti ya le parlament, ebi komiti, etak, terisatintela le tika kona, ku katzakasya inkwasu, shunzuka nao, lo nga talaran zerua, ma na, ma na ti kwene.
When it is passed in parliament, it goes to National Council of Provinces. There are processes that are followed until the president assents or sign it off as law.
Biyalo, re, osida o fitsho akangwa, ku ngavosichaba, o tlo, rumela, hotela vosichaba le di profensi, omi, wana di sipilo, di hato chelo, di lo, di tlo, di tlo latelo,
Do we agree on this process?
So, our request is that you should use this opportunity to give us your views regarding this bill.
Can I have the first five hands decide?
Can I have the first five hands decide?
I'm also speaking to you there at the top.
Now, we're going to go to the grandstand now.
It's only three this side. Okay, let's come this side.
The other two? We're going to go to Rashim Nene now.
The side has given me five. Do we still have two to decide?
Vambiri, you can go Rashim Mazi. Vambir, Arco.
So this side is forfeiting their chance for one person.
You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi.
Three minutes, then we'll do it. We'll refer to it. We'll take it. We'll take it. Organization, so that we take the necessary information.
And please, when you do your submission, please start by introducing yourself. Tell us your name, and if you are representing a certain organization, also tell us about that, and then do your submission.
And also remember that I said you should tell us whether you support or do not support the bill,
and also give us your reasons.
You can start.
My name is David Nondolosi. I represent GRASP, Gravelot Silwan Preska Secondary Cooperative. Let me start by saying, to say I agree or not agree, it doesn't make sense to me. It is twenty-nine years after democracy that we stand here and still talk about land issues. What are we doing to our people?
You can go Rashim Mazi. Let me go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi.
Let me speak and then you converse that because you're taking my minutes. The land shall be shared among those who work it. Restriction of land ownership on a racial basis shall be ended, and all the land be divided amongst those who work it. This piece of extract from GRASP meetings from 2015, developmental theme for food security. The biggest economies in the world survive by instigating wars in the globe. To survive in their own countries, Africa is number one victim in the onslaught. And political liberation without economic emancipation spouts disaster to the generations to come. The economic meltdown of countries forces them to do the unthinkable in order to stabilize their own countries. People with hungry stomach will make it their business to grasp whatever they find, from whoever they get, hold of, no matter what status they hold, for those who have used it properly, to use it correctly for the people who are marginalized. Land for farmers. We have no one to point about not having land to produce food except ourselves. It is unfortunate we will realize when it is late that we should have done something to prevent what the apartheid government did. We are a resource-caste nation. We want to import everything. How long is this going to take? And this bill, when is it going to be enacted? After twenty-twenty discussions from your level? I believe you have to do something. We are able to put policies in place, put business plans in place, but if you are not able to put those into action, that means nothing. As you are here today, let me tell you, you actually constraining the provincial government, the district government, the municipal government, because they can't do anything if you don't actually put those acts in place and act upon them. We go to them, and then they can't do anything because you're holding their hands. Please, do something about it. Thank you.
You can go Rashim Mazi. 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 You can go Rashim Mazi.
You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi.
Thank you very much. My name is Hill Makumbila. I'm, yes, Hill, H-I-double-L. I'm from the ward twenty-eight, that side of Gavaza and Begazdorpe and Parare. I accept the bill, and I think it's going to address a lot when I check the background of what is happening currently regarding agriculture. We are just facing the challenge, we've got the land, but the problem is, it's dry land. How is agriculture going to address such a challenge, because it's been long? The people shall share, the people shall govern. It must come into an implementation. Yes, we heard about that twenty-nine years ago or thirty years ago, that the people shall share, the people shall govern, but we don't see the implementation. Today's date as I speak, we've got a lot of political parties. Why political parties in South Africa? Every day, there is a new political party. Why? It's because you guys, you've got nice policies. Even the governing party's got nice policies, but unfortunately, you don't implement what you read, what you have written here. But if it will come to pass that you implement, you will see a change in South Africa. We're not going to have more increasing political parties. Political parties are rising every day because there is no implementation. I've read this Preservation Bill of Agriculture. It's very interesting, and it's addressing the people shall share and the people shall govern when it comes to the land. When you are heading to Palaburua, you will see there is a lot of land which is vacant and is not useful. But if you are going to implement what is written here, salute. Thank you.
You can go Rashim Mazi. 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 You can go Rashim Mazi.
You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi.
Tawel, I'm Legao Rama Leppe. I'm from Maspale, municipality ward two. I can go Rashim Mazi. I'm going to the point, the supportability, hundred percent. Galiwaga Lawri, it do chirele jamishumu? Ja ora, le jeringwe jeringa novali di yona, ja tavo ja breena, gyalewo.
Greetings. My name is Legao Rama Leppe. I'm from Greater Litaba Municipality, ward two. I'm not going to be long, because the time that I've been given is too short. Now, I would like to start by saying that I support the bill, hundred percent. The reasons are that it is going to protect jobs and ensure food security. I thank you.
You can go Rashim Mazi.
I'm Komo. My name is Emmanuel UBC, from Giyani Farmers Association. I'm going to go Rashim Mazi. I'm going to go Rashim Mazi. So, I'm going to go Rashim Mazi. 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 Because we don't own the land. So, I'm going to go Rashim Mazi. I'm going to go Rashim Mazi.
Thanks. My name is Emmanuel UBC. I'm from the association in Giyani. The emphasis that I have is on the change of strategies, change of the systems that you are using. Your systems are not helping. The systems that you have are not helping because we all have, we all do not have title deed in the land that we think we own. We only have the PTOs. And PTOs means any time somebody can come from anywhere and evict you or demolish whatever you have done in your place. So please, we beg you to calm down from the status of being celebrity. We adore you as you are in front of us today. You look like celebrities, but we don't want that to prolong anymore. You are the government of the people, so please represent us as the people. We know that now it's time for elections, so you are in a way in a campaign trail. We appreciate your campaigns, but please, as the government of the people, come down to assist us. Come down to the people and assist to change and transform the situation that we are in. We know, nobody around here can claim to have any title deed. There is no one, even the chiefs, the indunas, they do not have any title deed around. So please, assist. We need to have this title deed so that we can have clear ownership of the places that we are staying in. Thank you.
You can go Rashim Mazi. 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 You can go Rashim Mazi.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Huemura Avasheni. My name is Naomi Exel, and I'm representing Agri Litaba, which is a farmers' association in the Litaba area. So from Agri Litaba, we agree that it is in the national interest to preserve and promote the sustainable development of agricultural land for the production of food and other agricultural products for the primary purpose of sustaining and enhancing human life and for the benefit of the present and the future generations. We agree that there is a need to ensure the preservation and development of agricultural land in a proactive manner to prevent the fragmentation of agricultural land and to minimize the loss of agricultural land, to promote viable farming units, to encourage the optimal use of agricultural land, and to provide for food security. Notes, we note, we note that high-value agricultural land is scarce and non-renewable resource and that the pressures exerted on agricultural land makes it increasingly difficult to effectively and sustainably produce sufficient food. We also support the objects of the bill to promote the preservation and sustainable development of agricultural land, to democrat protected agricultural areas to ensure that agricultural land is preserved and protected against non-agricultural uses in order to promote long-term agricultural production, especially mines, and to promote and encourage viable farming units from long-term economic, environmental, and social perspective. We do however have a few concerns that we would like parliament to take into consideration. Land use restrictions, this could limit the ability of farmers to sell their land for agri-processes for developmental purposes. Also, the land use restriction on ecotourism, that is essential game farming on dry land where there is not a lot of water. And then zoning permits. The bill might establish stricter zoning regulations or require additional permits for land use changes, and this could increase bureaucratic processes and potentially affect the flexibility of commercial farmers in expanding and adapting their operations. But in essence, we support the bill in principle. Thank you.
You can go Rashim Mazi. 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 You can go Rashim Mazi.
You can go Rashim Mazi. You can go Rashim Mazi. Ma ba pele ro tjele cha eh bo pele, biya ba tu ba kensha roka shirele tjeo lo kontishi sha. Bo kamuso biya eh se chaba se o se tlaa ro. Me re du melagape gorre, gorre, tluwa kagona le tloke gorre, ya gorre kontishi gorre. Gorre na le chirele tjeo mogole tshabolo ya ma vu acha timo. Eka mogole roka thibe la, roka patlala, roba ro senye ra, ra eh ma vu acha timo. Mogole roka fukocha di tashakelo, mogole eh gorre kontishi shagore. Eh ma vu acha timo, acha la pele le ro shumi shua. Me eh re waagape re, shalosa gorre re, tcheha di nepo cha mola waka kanya wo. Me eh ma ba ka ke gorre, gorre tje tje pele chirele tjeo, le tshabolo ya ma vu acha timo. Me eh re hasanon le ro shumi shua. Roba le gorre fetoloa, ra ma vu acha timo gorre a shumi shetje ma ba ka, a esengore ra se a timo. Ya ke tla fe la fa, kala bo.
Namsha weta inkwene. Vitora mina, mina Chaesa Lidia Baloi. Ne oma kuala under GTM. I'm a committee secretary, ward twenty-six. This bill intaku naisapota based on the fact that iti komba ita resolver the conflict between mahusia ina, the rightful farm owners and the government in general. So that iko taku producer, shakuudia le shanga taku taku vashi save the entire province. Indeed, in ti soluka our speaker, our province is very rich. I maprasi na shakuudia. Yakona maprasi nama kulu, the big farms that we have, letting us shitinga regnati title deeds is correct. Unless she is government in final commission resolver, so that we don't fool ourselves. Iku ina shakuudia era ava, the correct ownership in terms of title deeds. Also, the government must also intervene in trying to solve the challenges letting akona ka those farmers. Intele we mention our big farm, yes, that's the two. There are challenges letting akona let final get resolve as well. The government must also intervene. Na maprasi nama ngana wena kwa, kunava mahova, kunava all these big farmers. But now I want to take this opportunity and dwell much on my ward, ward twenty-six. Ina maprasi under ward twenty-six, unoccupied, nama ngarekutereen, and on very rich soil. For example, maprasi nama ngakoona, eh, ra masuma site. Kunanda wiorima, ndawi kona, very rich soil, marai samse shelisha. So akoba shikombe, lo ku kaba agriculture, aba identified ndawo liya, but it is a for good agricultural purposes. Then vata kota kawa resolver the conflict between the who sita ina na the real land owners or farm owners liya, but it is setla, then vata kota kuma mintero na shakuudia. Then, on the allocated plots, that ita tashin singwa singwa nalishe vanwa inabarimakon. We need agriculture as well to intervene, but test tamisaba liya, but test la vanwa ina baba nika more support. What we need in our municipality is more financial support, not the trainings. Kuba ekota kuraima ka those specific farming plots, because in much of farming areas, ni savaku aikale. Anamisaba ya kalle, itla ifka ngaku mi support in terms of manuring. And ana lava kukombelela also na support ka lava shufu as well. Because we don't eat only vegetables and fruits, na nyama ilava, bakuwa na lava shufu. Na lava ngana interest, kakwa ba enda, ba ba enda in, ba fu shufu liya for support ya ya shakuudia in the province as well. They need more support, we need awareness, they need more trainings. And then na maati as well, shubula shakula vana nyuka di plots liya. Bafana ba borre wa di bohols, kume va ndjerwa di reservoirs. La vana taku taku vaka kuma maati, vaka chele ta massimulama ya. Now the trainings in terms of the crops, let we final kuwa di bzaala ka massimulama ya. Because in our villages, ku bza'aruanza nama vele, timanga na tinzuuanza en. Nukuma kuru mi savaliya, ye lava ba chinchaa, the crops maybe according to the seasons and stuff. That's why we need more trainings, we need more financial support, inku.
Thank you, my name is Chaesa, I'm from ward twenty-six. I want to concur and support the bill and to say that to our leaders, please help us in resolving the conflicts that are within the communities, so that we can be able to produce food. We have, we are known to be one of the rich provinces. But because we do not have title deeds, we do not have the correct ownership to the land that we are talking about, to the land that we are making production out of. So that amounts to a little bit of nothing if we look at the challenges that we are having in the farms that we are talking about. There are farms that are so much into challenges, conflicts, and so that there are farms around Masumo, if I'm not mistaken, which are unoccupied. These farms do not have a rich soil type which can be able to produce good food. We need to be able to get assistance from the departments in order for us to identify and have good agricultural productions after identification so that these farms can be able to produce jobs and food for our people. We also are crying for financial support and also training so that we can be able to value the soil that we have. And we are not only talking about the farms in terms of producing food as in crops. We are also talking about animals that can produce or give us meat as food. And so that we, in short saying, we need to also dwell on animal farming. And also, we are talking about the support for water. People should be assisted to make bowls and water reservoirs so that they can be able to water and give their animals water. Also, we are talking about support in terms of identifying the crop types that we are talking about. Our people only know how to do maize, nuts and stuff like that. They are not aware of, even if they are aware, but they do not get proper support in terms of changing the, doing the crop rotations so that they can be able to plant and harvest different types of vegetation. Thank you.
Kala bo, le inala kakena Chaesa Baloi, kutoa ward twenty-six. Eh kome kena eh mohaledi wa ward, kiema fa, ki ki tcheha wana mola waka kanya. Ki tloka, ke bana ore, mola waka kanya wo, utlo tusha kudu, gorarola di hakanu. Che ilongore doona, garera ba etapele basi tjeo. Kome ki rapeli di hakanu, che ilongore doona, garenga batwa beng ba naga, ba maleba. Kanete eh ruvule tje fa, gorre na gayare na, etloka iku milo kudu, eh kau tjele cha eh kudu di enwa le merogo. Kome ke yama fa, ke shishi ya kere, are raro lenbo tchata ba jona di title deed. Kome agape eh kere, musho, uswa neji o raro le, matata aylongore aho, nanga na kuwa di di company jao tshwana le, eh di tlo tchero di libana le, company jao tshwana le zezetu. Le eh le libana ba ma 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 kado, ma kado fam. Eh agape eh kapkuwa ward eh twenty-six, retlo arideli mu wa wo, wa wo na na kudu.
To me, I was born in Malawi. I was born in the Soma Cooperative, word 6. And the bill that I was born in, it was Mara.